Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good afternoon to everybody and welcome to the September 10th Joint Special Meeting of the Orange County Continuum of Care Board and the Commission to Address Homelessness. I'm glad we have a large room that can fit everybody, so it's exciting to see all of you here. I'm glad to be here. This is the second joint meeting of the County COC and the Commission. And given that we both Commissions work actively to discuss and address homeless issues, and today's meeting will allow us to further collaborate, I want us to begin before anything else with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll all please rise if you're able, and raise your right hand over your heart. Read that for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Let me just go through a couple of brief comments. The agenda for today contains a brief general description of each item to be considered. Except as provided by law, no action shall be taken on any item not appearing on the agenda. The Commission to Address Homelessness and the Orange County Continuum of Care Board encourages public participation, so if you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda or during general public comments, please complete a speaker request form and turn it in to the clerk, who is to my right, and you will be addressed. And speakers will be given up to three minutes to speak. The clerk will run the timer and announce when your time is up. Public comment may also be submitted electronically by emailing response@ocgov.com. And with that, we will move on to roll calls. So Madam Clerk, if you'll please call roll.
Thank you. Members, please indicate your presence when I call your name. I'm going to start with the Continuum of Care Board. Laval Brewer. Judson Brown. Dr. Kelly Bruno Nelson. Andrew Crow. Nicole Gideon.
Here.
Sha'koya Greenlong. Vex Heho Kalil. Mary Sol Johnson. Sandra Luzo. Sammy Martinez. Melanie McQueen. Dr. Tiffany Mitchell. Nista Mohendra.
Here.
Robert Santa Bob Morse. Felicia Payne. Jason Phillips. Dawn Price. Maricela Rios Faust. George Circe. Tim Shaw. And Dr. Shantina Sorrells. Okay, I will confirm that we do have a quorum of the Continuum of Care Board. I'll move on to the Commission to Address Homelessness. Commissioner Sarmiento.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hawley. Commissioner Spitzer. Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Bustamante Pizca. Commissioner Afable. Commissioner Vanderpool. Commissioner Kim. Commissioner Rose. Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Ivins. Commissioner Hurst. Commissioner Pineman. Commissioner Bruno Nelson. Commissioner Rios Faust. And Commissioner Morse. And I will note for the record that we do have a quorum of the Commission to Address Homelessness.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I think for purposes of today, we really didn't have to establish quorum because we're not going to be having any action items before us. This is more informational and for discussion purposes, but nonetheless, it's good to know that we have quorum and many members of both boards. So one last housekeeping item as a reminder, please beware that the room is hot-miked for the live stream of the meeting. Additional microphones are placed on the table in front of you, and please speak into those microphones so it may be picked up, and your comment could be considered for the live stream. Please try to keep side conversations to a minimum as they may be picked up by the microphones throughout the room. Before we go into the public comment section, I just want to say thank you all for taking the time to attend. These joint meetings are exceptionally important for all of us to consider each other's comments because the boards are separate and they take up action items independently of one another. So to the extent that we can share what we're doing at the Commission to Address Homelessness and hear what you all are doing at the COC is really critically important. But what I do at the Commission to Address Homelessness, and the members will know this already, I just want this to be a really open conversation, and I want to hear from all of you, and we all want to hear from each other. But I want you to know that this is a forum that I think needs to have as much of our voices heard, and I want there to be uninhibited, unconstrained comments because the issues before us are so important. And so we've been tasked with trying to give some direction to the Board of Supervisors, but also to the public to know that we are considering some issues that continue to challenge us and for us to provide guidance and direction. So your words are incredibly important, so I want you to know that we hope to hear from all of you. With that said, at this time, we'll take up public comments from any members of the public wishing to speak on any non-agenda topics that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission or the COC Board. So Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to address us?
Yes, we have one request from the public to speak.
Hello?
Yes. And Steve, there is no timer, but I am running a timer here, and I'll just announce when your three minutes is up, okay?
Yeah, just give me a one-minute wrap-up, so I appreciate that. Okay, hi, my name is Steve McNally. I'm a citizen of Costa Mesa. I also am on a board like this, one of the approximate 80 in the county Behavioral Health Advisory Board. My comments are my own. I do not speak for our board. Just want to make that clear. But I want you to know, because I have a big reference point to mental health, substance use, and the other things that go with it, housing, suicide, and whatnot. I was at the last Commission on Homelessness. I went up to the chair that day, and I said, when Sue Parks asked about vouchers, I was sort of surprised that no one said, how can I help you get the voucher, help you with the two things she asked for? Everyone said how great a person she was, but nobody really asked, how could we help her achieve her two goals that she asked for? And in my eyes, that says that the OC cares that we did in law enforcement, and that we're going to do in older adults, should really be the standard that all boards and commissions operate under, with that accountability and that amount of transparency and data I also want you to be aware that mental health funding in this county, prior to No Place Like Home, we gave $100 million of direct funding for mental health services. No Place Like Home, we gave $140 million back to the state. So that's $240 million of direct mental health services. We continued to fund housing through MHSA, and we will continue to fund housing interventions through BHSA. I think 35% of that BHSA money will be intervention. So between CalOptima and the county, understanding the weeds of how that's going to operate is going to be important, and what the flexibility is there. Thank you for the one-minute warning. We've also asked many times about community solutions in our county. San Diego uses them. One thing that comes with community solutions, besides the great data, is the MindOC partner, the original partner of Kaiser, participates as one of the lead partners. Kaiser does fund housing in other counties in our state. It also brings the Bomber Group, the guy who owns the Clippers, who gave money to LA Department of Mental Health for data. And it brings Tableau for all the, Tableau, I'm not sure how to say it, but brings all their data capabilities. So tremendous partner. And then lastly, I stand here not to tell anybody what they could, should, or would do, but I like to be a silo breaker. I attend a lot of different meetings. I see a lot of different faces. I participate when I attend, so people tend to know me.
Your time is up.
And I'm going to wrap up. Thank you. I would just ask that when the state requires unsiloed approaches to get funding, we get more urgent about getting it done. It may take the leadership of the supervisors and their staff to participate more actively across the board. So thank you for letting me share.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public that wish to address?
We have no other speakers.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Steve, for those comments. Steve does tireless work on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, so thank you for your service there, Steve, and for your comments. So I'm going to bring it back to the board now, and to see if there are any updates or announcements, or just general comments from any members of either board. So this is going to be tricky for me, so you all help me as well. Raise that hand high, or just jump right in. But yeah, my peripheral vision isn't as good as it used to be. In any event, thank you all. So we'll now move on to the discussion item on our agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll please read that discussion item out.
Yes, item one is the presentation titled Falling Through the Safety Net: Understanding Individuals' Journey and Contributing Factors to Homelessness, presented by Doug Beck, Director of Care Coordination. And we have one request from the public to speak on this item.
Good morning. Julia Bidwell, Director of Office, OC Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Orange County Housing Authority. Just wanted to indicate that my Chair Stephanie Otto of our HCD Commission, City Council member from City of Laguna and Agal, and I are here. We had the opportunity for ZUIMMA to give us this presentation at our H and CD Commission, which mainly oversees operations of the Orange County Housing Authority, but also hears about the affordable housing developments that we're investing in. So we're here to listen today, and just wanted to let you know that we're here to join you. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Julia, and welcome, Council Member Otto. Thank you for all the work that you do. So let me go ahead and move this along. In January 2025, the Commission had a joint special meeting with the Orange County Continuum of Care Board to discuss the proposed questions on the 2025 survey. This provided an opportunity for both groups involved in the homelessness policy space to collaborate and provide feedback to shape the survey. Mr. Beck, through the Office of Care Coordination, updates portions of the Commission, updates the Commission to Address Homelessness on the agendas, and has provided updates on progress for this item throughout the last several meetings, and is now ready to present the results of the 2025 homeless survey called Falling Through the Safety Net. So I'm excited to hear the presentation, as we all are, and learn more about the factors that have led to people who are experiencing homelessness, how they got there. This is an opportunity for us to review the content, to refine and target our prevention programs and our approaches. Before I turn it over to Mr. Beck, I'm going to invite Vice Chair Mohendra to share some additional remarks. But I think, at its essence, I think, looking at the data, the findings from this survey are critically important to have us shape policy. It shouldn't be the other way around. And a lot of times, I think government does that. We shape policy, and then we try to fit it into the problem. I think understanding what the issues are directly from those who are experiencing these issues is really critically helpful if we bring it before us and we do as much as we can to incorporate those comments. So with that, I want to thank Vice Chair Mohendra, and I'll turn the mic over to her for her comments.
Thank you so much, Chair Sarmiento. I am Nishtha Mohendra, and I have the honor of currently serving as the Vice Chair for the COC Board. On behalf of my colleagues who are present in the room, and our Chair, Dr. Sorrells, who's also actually listening in, I don't want to stand too much between what I have to say and listening to the findings. I'll echo what Chair Sarmiento said. We too are excited and energized to hear the findings. We know for a fact the experience of homelessness is not a single event and a multitude of factors that impact somebody's life. Housing costs, health, trauma, any systemic opportunities that we can help triangulate to create a solution. So we're excited to hear about the findings and find ways that, how we translate these into compassionate solution for our community members that both the boards serve. With that, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And let me go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Beck.
Can you all hear me? All right, there we go. So thank you, everyone, for coming out. This is really such a great sign to see three groups here. You have the Commission, the Society.
Doug, if I'm me, your mic might not be on.
Might not be? Okay. There we go. That should help. Thank you. So it's really great to see three groups here, the Commission, the COC, and the Commission for Housing and Community Development here. Because of the work that all three groups do has such an important impact on addressing homelessness here in Orange County. I'm excited. I know many of you have seen a decent amount of the data today, but I'm going to spend a little bit of time walking through the presentation. And we've prepared for this presentation. I think the biggest takeaway for me when it comes to this survey is what I see as the validation of the importance of the work that's done here in this room by everybody, and how it validates the importance of helping folks prevent themselves, you know, prevent them from falling into homelessness, how important our community is at achieving that goal. So the way I'm going to proceed is I'm going to walk through the entire presentation. It's probably going to take about 30 minutes. I'll be as expeditious as possible, but this feels like the one arena where really working through all of the data is really important. And hopefully, that will allow us, for a little over an hour at least, of really good discussion around what you all see when you see this data, and what should we be doing as a community moving forward. So we have a few loose findings at the end. We haven't written up the entire survey yet. As an office, plan on releasing a report either later this month or earlier next month. We see this as a vital step in that process. We could not write a report without presenting in front of you all, and more importantly, hearing from you all on what you see from this data, what you take away from this report, and what you believe should be the next steps. So as we, so thank you all again for joining us today to present on the 2025 survey, which we've titled Falling Through the Safety Net: Understanding the Journey and Contributing Factors to Homelessness. If we proceed through the results of the survey, you will understand why we titled the survey Falling Through the Safety Nets. Because I believe you'll see how this is ultimately a story of people either exhausting their safety net or not having one at all to begin with. Our original goal and motivation for this survey was to understand the journey of people who fell into homelessness in the last year. And the reason for that was the alarming statistic we saw in the 2024 Point in Time count that stated that a little under half the people surveyed, half the unsheltered people surveyed, reported that they became homeless for the first time in the last year. This was a statistic that was much higher than anything we had seen previously. But after, or while we were going through the planning process of this survey, we realized that we didn't want to lose the opportunity to gather data from everybody that we came across that was experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So as I mentioned before, this survey is really focused on prevention. And specifically, I want to highlight the prevention pillar of our Commission to Address Homelessness. This has and continues to be, prevention has and continues to be a focus for the Commission to Address Homelessness in really slowing down the flow of people into homelessness. Before diving into the results, it's very important for me to mention and thank our partners. This was obviously not an effort that we took alone at the Office of Care Coordination. CityNet really did a lion's share of the work by helping us not only create the survey and test it, but they were the ones that went out there and conducted the survey over the course of March 2025, throughout the entire county. The Commission and COC helped support and shape the survey as well, specifically through our previous joint meeting, where extensive feedback around the survey itself was given before we finalized the survey and CityNet went out and conducted it. Additionally, the cities, law enforcement, outreach teams, all played big roles in partnering with us to ensure we were able to collect all 840 surveys. A few quick words about methodology. As we did in our 2023 survey, our goal was to survey a sample size that was representative of 20% of the unsheltered population reported in the most recent Point in Time count, and to ensure also that there was geographic equity. So we surveyed 20% of each city's unsheltered Point in Time count census. The survey, which was created through a several-month process and went through many groups, as I mentioned before this one, as well as the Lived Experience Advisory Committee, ended up being a little over 70 questions, requiring respondents to respond to anywhere between 50 and 70 questions based on each one of their unique answers. CityNet deployed that team, as I mentioned before, of professional survey administrators throughout Orange County during the month of March. And each one of those surveys averaged a completion time of about 18 minutes. CityNet then worked with our office throughout the spring to review and report on all of the data collected. I want to also note a few important limitations to our survey. First, the results are all based on self-reporting. This was a self-reported survey. Second, it's really important to remember that the only people responding to this survey were those who have unfortunately fell through the safety net and are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. These are thousands of people who are, there are thousands of people who are experiencing at-risk of homelessness that our community helps avoid homelessness each year. And for those people, we do not have, they are not represented in this data. I think it's also additionally important to note that, although I've said it a few times here, but I really want to be crystal clear here. We only surveyed people experiencing unsheltered homelessness on the street for this survey, which we know is a very specific cohort of the population of people experiencing homelessness. This doesn't include people that are living in shelters, living on private property. This does not, we also know that the unsheltered population on the streets often doesn't represent appropriately those families that are experiencing homelessness. This is a very specific group of individuals in which we surveyed, and their experience is unique to them. In terms of participation, we saw another high percentage. And I say another because if you remember back in the 2023 survey that we did, in 2023, roughly three-quarters of the people CityNet approached, completed a survey, were willing and actually did complete a survey. We saw a similar statistic in that category as well. And this really speaks well to our system. It states a couple of things to me. That people are interested and willing to tell their story, that people are interested in improving their situation and are open to help, and that also, I'll be specific, they trust CityNet, which is, you know, an extension of our larger homeless service system. And they're comfortable sharing, we have a system where people are comfortable sharing very personal information. I think that's due to a lot of the great work that's done by many of the groups represented here in this room. And this is really a good sign for our system and for the people that are experiencing homelessness. As I mentioned before, we ensured geographic equity by surveying 20% of each city's 2024 Point in Time count, as you can see up here, and that combines to 840 surveys. Speaking of equity, in comparison to our 2024 Point in Time count, we looked at the different demographic categories of people we surveyed in this survey and compared them to the larger census of 2024. And we saw strong alignment through all demographic categories, leading us to feel comfortable that this survey report is a good representative sample of all people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in Orange County. So let's dive a little bit into the results here. So here, we answer the first question about how long people have been experiencing homelessness, and really, originally the motivating question to our survey. We see that off the bat, that the length of time people are experiencing homelessness really varies here in this report, anywhere from less than a week, which is 7% of the survey respondents, to 4% of people reporting over 20 years. These results seem to suggest that the 48.33% of people who were stated in the 2024 Point in Time count that they were experiencing unsheltered homelessness for the first time in the last year, that that might be an anomaly in our data as we look at our data over time. In this survey, we're also seeing more people in each one of our categories, slightly higher numbers in all three categories of where people live compared to our 2023 survey. The ratios are the same, but we're seeing higher numbers and percentages of people report of people reporting that they're living outdoors, in vehicles, and in RVs. It's noteworthy to point out that almost 20% of the people report living in a vehicle. As we know, on outreach, people living in vehicles can be difficult to find, and then also difficult to continuously engage for obvious reasons. So, now that we have a little idea of who these people are that we surveyed, where they live, and how long they've been experiencing homelessness, we're going to dive into a little bit of a journey here. We're going to look at five key steps of that journey. First being what life looks, looked like before becoming homeless. How people became homeless, specifically what exactly happened during transitions of being at-risk to actually experiencing homelessness. What did they do to avoid homelessness? What could have helped to avoid homelessness? And finally, what life looks like now and how it compares to their life prior to becoming homeless. So, as we look at people's lives before experiencing homelessness, we see that 44% of the respondents reported living with a friend or family member. Second answer, the second highest-scoring answer at 37% states that were people stating that they were paying rent, that they were renting, I'm sorry. And then I thought, which was surprising here, is that the third most popular answer to this question was actually homeownership. It might have been a much lower percentage than the first two respondents, but I personally thought it was interesting that six, a little over 6% of people stated that they were, their last place of residence was homeownership. When asking if folks' names were on the lease or mortgage, we saw that 62% of people staying either with friends or family or renting an apartment stated their name was not on the lease. But 75% of the people who stated that they were living in a home they owned reported that their name was on the mortgage. When we shift to looking at first, how much, how much income folks, how many of them had income? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we also found some interesting data when it came to income prior to experiencing homelessness. Over 75% of people reported, 75% of people who reported having an income prior to becoming homeless reported that that income was an earned income, which yet again, and I'm going to continue throughout this to give you my sort of read on this or my initial reactions to this is, it was higher than what I expected to see. And it becomes more interesting as we look at data later on in this slide deck. When we shift to looking at first, what, how much was that actual income? And then second, how much they paid towards housing a month? The narrative starts developing, developing, which we will see throughout the data, showing the inability for people to really afford their housing. For monthly income, although a lot of people report earning an income, almost all of them, above 90%, were not making even the median salary of an individual here in Orange County. 71% of those people stated that they were making less than $3,000 a month. Fifty-four, and 54% of those, of those respondents stated that they were making less than $2,000 a month. So, as we look at income and then we look at, you know, rent or payment towards housing, and we transition over, we saw that people, for obvious reasons, really struggled to be able to pay what I'm going to say typically their share of housing was. So, 43% were paying less than $1,000 a month, and 20% paid between $1,000 and $2,000 a month. So, folks are paying less than, a large percentage of folks were paying less than the $24, $54 average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Orange County. Essentially, what we did here was we looked at how much people were making and then how much they were contributing towards their rent. And then we looked at some fair market stuff. And this is where it really shows on this particular slide that before we even get into any other contributing factor in their lives, arguably, they were doomed, unable to afford their place. Arguably, a matter of time before they ended up becoming homeless. This is purely based on their financial situation. We looked quickly at savings, and over 75% of folks, as you would imagine, stated that they didn't have any savings when they were housed. On the flip side, a little under 75% of people reported that they were not in debt either during that time. We also wanted to look at system involvement, meaning some of the systems, we all agree, might be signs of people having struggles in their lives. We asked about their interaction with these systems prior to becoming homeless and saw this group was overrepresented in each category. Prior incarceration rates were nine times higher than the national average. History of parole and probation is almost 22 times higher than the general public. Twice the amount of respondents reported a history of living subsidized housing compared to the general public. Similar numbers were seen when asked about history of foster care and poverty during childhood. This is important to show both the potential signs of people at risk, but also the different challenges and barriers many people faced while they were housed. When we look at the disabilities, we saw significant rates here as well. You see, 8% of folks reported that prior to becoming homeless, they had a cognitive disability, 14.8% emotional and behavioral disability, and 17% a physical disability. When discussing trauma, we asked folks about their history of experiencing trauma. Overall, almost 75% of those we surveyed stated that they have experienced trauma in their lives. Now, this 75% stat includes time well experiencing homelessness. But with that said, 75% of the people who said they experienced trauma said that trauma played a role in them becoming homeless. Now, we move to, on to what happened and what contributed to them becoming homeless. So, we asked people about what factors contributed to their homelessness. Here are some, here, people could have selected more than one factor contributing to their homelessness. And in fact, 78% of people, four out of every five people, selected more than one contributing factor. As you can see here on this slide, nearly 80% of people stated finances contributed to them becoming homeless. Over 60% reported relationships as a factor. And over half selected health and safety as a contributing factor to their homelessness as well. When we look separately at what financial factors they reported, the cost of housing was selected most. Financial support slash decreased income, income was the second highest-rated response. And then the third, lack of affordable housing was third. And arguably, that third response is pretty much identical to what I consider that first response of financial, cost of, cost of housing playing a factor. We see that an argument or falling out was the highest-selected description of relationship factor selected in front of the 25% of people referencing divorce, separation, or breakup. When we asked people to choose the most impactful factor to them falling into homelessness, finances received the highest response, with relationships falling right closely behind. This represents two important points. We see, we keep seeing that finances are the biggest factor in someone falling into homelessness. This data also shows how people's journeys are unique in every path that consists of a variety of factors that combining those factors lead to them losing their housing. We didn't just ask why people became homeless. We asked them about notice, about how much notice they had. What we saw was that most, 62%, reported having less than a week's notice that they were becoming homeless. Now, you know, what I'll say is just before we, or before you do what I might have done, which was when you see that almost 62% had less than a week's notice, before anyone might jump to a conclusion about landlords or our lack, potential lack of protection for renters in this stat, it's important to point out that over half the people who reported less than a week were people that were staying with friends and family. And we also see that almost, that amongst this group, that relationship factors were the biggest reason for them becoming homeless, almost equal to financial factors. So, although this is an alarming stat, it's worth diving into this further and one that we caution the group not to make any immediate assumptions when seeing this data point. So, now we move to what was done to avoid homelessness. And here, we might find what I consider the most alarming stat of the report, which is that only 12% reported seeking help before they became homeless. Now, I imagine this was greatly impacted by the, by the little notice that so many of them reported having. And then I, I also wonder, as we think about warning, as I, as I prepared for today, how much notice did you have before coming homeless? I also wonder, in some cases, if it was, how much, how long did you have when you realized you might be homeless? The warning and realizing, okay, I'm moving in a direction towards homelessness. I think an important hair to split, not necessarily in the goal of trying to place blame or on anybody, but important to think about. On the flip side, I think, and on potentially a positive note, this might be a good sign for, that our system's working. You know, I think if we came in here and we saw that 90% of people reached out for help prior to becoming homeless, and they ended up becoming homeless, I think that that would be a much more alarming statistic because that meant that people are reaching out to our system and our system is potentially failing them. This data point might reflect on a system that is working, meaning that a large percentage of people that do reach out for help hopefully are not experiencing homelessness. And that if one does reach out for help, there's a much greater chance that homelessness is avoided. When we look at this 12% that did, 12% that did reach out for, did reach, did reach out for services, we see that the top services that they responded to, that they received was food pantry and meals, which is important, but not directly keeping anyone housed. And then the following responses, we see a variety of services at a lower percentage that do provide help, but obviously not enough to keep the person who's responding to this survey housed. Importantly, 27 people, about a quarter of the group of people who sought help, stated that the help delayed their homelessness. And about 40% of the people state that services are, they continue to receive assistance. Shifting to, shifting to the question about asking them what would have helped, the overwhelming number of responses spoke about, and spoke about housing that they could afford. Six out of the seven top answers provided gave a response related to having a house they could afford. Yet again, regardless of everything else going on in someone's life, when you are strictly asking the question about how to avoid homelessness, nothing else, finances and affordable housing continues to rise to the top. I'm sorry, I'm just, sure I'm aligned with you all. When we look at life now and how it compares to life prior to experiencing homelessness and the impact that homelessness has on a person and the system, we see really interesting data. First, I want to point out household composition change. Prior to becoming homeless, 225 people reported living in a household with children. But only six of them reported that children were still a part of their household. So, important to note is, is that children are not, some of the things important to note about this status is that children are not coming along this journey into homelessness at a very high rate. But what we do see with this statistic is the potential of losing connection and custody with one's children. And although we did not ask if the children in that household was there, it's, or it's important to note that out of the 225 individuals who responded, children were a part of their household. That question didn't go further and specify if it was their own children and that they had specific custody. We definitely see a movement towards, with this data, towards isolation and a decrease in support. We also see fracturing of the household that is still housed with people exiting the home and understand that trauma comes along with that. Now, we can move back to the income. So, if you remember, 61% of people reported that they had earned an income prior to experiencing homelessness, which is that top bar on the left there. Now, when people have transitioned into homelessness, that number is just above 8%. These people are not only seeing a decrease in their income, but they're no longer engaging in the workforce the way they used to. And obviously, engagement and benefits and the need for public assistance increases. They're now more reliant on the system, less financially equipped to find and be able to afford housing. So, life, yet as, as this group knows very well, life does not get better. It gets significantly worse and challenges become significantly greater when someone becomes homeless. And as we see here as well, our system is now called upon at a much greater rate when someone becomes homeless. When we look at disabling conditions, pre and post, or, you know, when someone was housed and when they became homeless, we see that an additional 4.5% of the respondents stated that they were diagnosed with a cognitive disability after experiencing homelessness. homelessness. An additional 15% were diagnosed with an emotional or behavioral disability while experiencing homelessness. An additional 14% were diagnosed with a physical disability. Especially in this category, I probably should have mentioned it the first time around when I presented this data, is that what we've seen historically when it comes to disabilities, self-reporting, that often the number that we get is a floor and not a ceiling, that this is most likely an underrepresentation, are experiencing these disabilities. Lastly, we go, we touch back on the safety net, specifically asking people about their personal, their personal safety net. Only 17 and a half percent of respondents, less than one in every five, reported having a friend or a family member that could help them at the moment of the survey. Yet again, really leaving the responsibility, and I know that's a strong word, but for lack of a better word, to us as a system, as a county and as a city, and as a nonprofit community, to really support folks. That safety net, as I opened this, really eroded. And lastly, I wanted to provide a handful of the findings that we see here, or that some of our initial thoughts and findings. And we kept it really high level. We're really interested in the conversation leading out of my presentation here, but a couple of real basic ones. The factors and journey into homelessness is varied. Everybody has a different path entering homelessness. We also see that, that most people are experiencing some type of disability. Relationships vary and they can compound on each other. Safety net and resources and programs were not accessed before. Yet again, financial factors are the most significant in most individuals' paths to becoming homeless. And then the results of this study are, with many of the other research and surveys done. And then the last, I think I want to add an additional one in terms of finding or sort of recommendation, especially now that we're, you know, a couple of, about a month or two into presenting this. And I think it's really important, so to be clear that this, you know, this study does two things, and one might argue that they're conflicting of each other. Points out the importance of finances. At the end of the day, when it comes to specifically just your status related to homelessness, people cannot financially afford that. That being said, although finances play the biggest role, they don't play only role. People, finances plays that significant role, but finances are affected by all of the other things that are happening in people's lives. The one thing that I think is so important is, especially in a discussion like this, is that we should not devalue any factor because there's other factors. And I say that because often in these discussions, when we mention something like finance plays such a big and important role and can be so helpful, most that oppose immediately go back to, well, people are experiencing substance use and mental illness, you know, they have challenges with family relationships, they're not working. And those things all may be true, but we need to work on all of them. So by raising up one particular factor to state that the importance of that, that doesn't devalue the others. And just because there are other factors does not devalue, you know, the top factor. And this continues to point to us as we, Office of Care Coordination, as we see the really changing landscape, not only in funding, locally, state level and the federal level, but also the change in messaging around how to address homelessness specifically at the federal level. You know, this really speaks and solidifies from our perspective, the importance of a very robust and healthy system of care that helps people, not only in the different factors that impact people falling into homelessness, but throughout one's life, not just the months leading up to someone falling into homelessness. Importance of prevention services all the way upstream. So with that, I'll pass it back to the chair and
Thank you, Mr. Beck. So we appreciate the presentation. I'm going to probably toss it right back to you because you have a better vantage point of where we all are. And so maybe you could just see who would like to, you know, speak and have questions. But not that I don't want to have you sitting next to me. That's got nothing to do with it.
That was one of the reasons I stood up.
It's just easier for you to see from there. And you're familiar with all of us on both boards. I just want to thank you for, you know, the overview, for the work, you and your team, CityNet and everybody else who had a role in doing the survey. We all see a lot of studies and we see, you know, surveys that are done either at the state level, at you know, sort of a more broad level. It's really important to get an understanding about what's happening locally, like what the conditions are in our county, that may tell a better story. So we can be, I guess, more surgical with our, you know, with our responses, with our resources. You know, I think what Mr. Beck was saying is really true. The landscape has changed. So what resources we had available to us before are no longer the case. So we have to adjust. And I think it's a good moment to just step back, look, and you know, kind of assess, you know, you know, also, are our strategies working? Because now we can reflect back and see, there's been tremendous amount of work in our system of care and our system of response. And I think many of them are very sound. And I think the numbers, you know, could be much larger if they weren't in place, but some are more effective than others. And we have to be honest about that. And I think that's where all of you who have such important backgrounds and expertise and care can really help guide the public policy on which approaches seem to render the best results and which ones may be, you know, given our limited resources going forward, which ones maybe could be, maybe not set aside, but maybe, you know, adjusted. And so that's really the, the goal here. But I did want to say, just on this survey, it's much more granular than I expected it to be. So I just didn't think that we were going to have the level of detail on this. And you know, 50 to 70 questions, a lot of questions, but sometimes you're not able to get some good findings. And these are pretty specific findings. So, you know, you know, applause to your, to your team and your efforts. I just wanted to say, can you give us an idea of like, give us a little bit more context on how are we trending, you know, given the past point in time counts, given what you're seeing? You know, there's been efforts, investment, concern and, you know, programs. What's your view on trends? And how are we, and you know, and, and look, it's not to be critical. It's constructive criticism. And I think we have to be, you know, honest with ourselves. So just your thoughts, Mr. Beck.
Yeah, that's sort of the, you know, million dollar question. I think from where I sit, there's a couple of ways that I measure this. So first, because the point in time count in my specific role is such an important one as it is, I, you know, when I project to the future, A, I try not to project publicly and B, I am always preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. With that being said, there's a couple of things that I think are really important. In our office, we track flow and outflow into our system based on the
Homeless Management Information
data, which is data that represents over 85 providers that
Enter
And we're seeing more people entering into homelessness than we're as a system able to permanently house. That really speaks to two data points, like the point in time count does, when you compare them from one point in time count to the other. One, you know, it's, it's how many people are coming in compared to how many people are going out. More people are being housed compared to the amount of people entering homelessness than our population goes down. It's the other way, our population goes up. I am nervous that there is a potential, we're still months out. And I'd have, really rely on many of the people in this room to really educate me about my opinion on this. But at the moment, nervous we're going to see an increase. I'm also very nervous that our system is being funded at a much lower rate than it has been historically. And then most importantly, you know, funding varies, as we all know, throughout times. Sometimes we have more funding and sometimes we have less. What doesn't, what's unique about today is the messaging around solutions really changing off of what we as a community, you know, know works. Because we've been doing this for a while and we've learned some solutions work and some don't. We call that, you know, evidence-based practice. People act that term. But when you just simplify it to evidence-based practices, you know, things that a community has done and realized either works or doesn't work. So that is where I'm really nervous. And I think that, you know, like any social issue, you need to fund the solutions for it in order to see progress. I think, you know, the lamest analogy I could give is a garden. I could spend, you know, a weekend in the spring, putting a ton of money and a ton of water into my garden, but if I leave it, you know, for the rest of the summer and the fall and do nothing to it, it is, it's going to look nice those first couple of weeks. But then when you don't continue to, you know, fund it and you don't continue to put work in it, you're going to see diminishing results. And you can't just lay back and go, oh, I did, you know, we put a lot of efforts in it years ago. Why do we still have this challenge? And that's where I get nervous. So I went a little bit around, around and around. I hope that somewhat
Helpful. That's helpful. Let me go ahead and open it up to, you know, all board members and commissioners. Please, you know, feel free to address any part of the survey. And this is really where the value of the discussion is. But I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Beck so he can go ahead and call on folks.
I'm curious at the, is it on?
Yes.
The beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that the survey was really focused on prevention. And I'm just curious, you know, was there, what was the reason for focusing on just prevention or primarily prevention?
I think, you know, I'll speak for our office. We do a lot of work and a lot of work around address efforts when people become homeless. We have significant outreach teams, shelter and housing that we work with OCCR on. And prevention efforts, we, we haven't studied as much. I guess I'll just be honest. 2023, our survey focused on people's experience in our system. How are they, why were they, why were they or why were they not engaging in our shelter system, homeless solutions? And it was really helpful. One of the things that came out of that was that our commission appreciated, the commission to address homelessness, appreciated the study. But as we know, we really have four pillars to our system. And one of them is prevention. And we realized that in order to decrease homelessness, we not only need to get people out of homelessness, we need to prevent people from falling into it. And we, we thought that we could use this opportunity to really understand the people here in Orange County, what their journey was in regards to coming into homeless, hopefully learn from that.
Just to bounce off of that, are you able to pull like cross tabs out of here? Can you look at this group that's been homeless less than a year and maybe the one to two year group and compare them? And are you doing that?
That is, you know, we can do that. That's arguably one of the things we probably would like to do moving forward. Everything's capacity. I'll, I'll assume that as a, as the director. But especially as I, it's funny because as I've done this presentation, we, I talk about the original goal and then we've transitioned to a new goal. There's always, exactly, is, there's an important trend to be seen is the people that have just become homeless, the different factors that have impacted their journey compared to that, you know, 4% group that it was 20 years ago. So, yeah, I appreciate that. Probably something, yeah, that's on the top of our list for potential next steps. Yeah, Beck, Beck's please.
Thank you. That was going to be one of the questions that I had as well. And I'm not sure when the pivot was. And forgive me for not recalling, but I thought the original intent had been to survey people who had newly become homeless. And so I'm not sure when the, the shift happened between the target audience for the survey.
So pretty early on, because there was, we were speaking with CityNet about, okay, we only want to, originally, we only want to collect data from people that have been experiencing homelessness for less than a year. So operationally, that meant they would go out, ask that question. Someone would say, I'm experiencing homelessness for five years. And we say, okay, thank you. We'll move specific, you know, we're looking for a group, you know, this specific group that's been a lot of years. And we lost that opportunity to find out about that individual's journey as well. The other thing was that our thought was that that 48.33% was an anomaly in the, so if our sole goal was to go out and prove whether that figure was accurate or not, we really would miss an opportunity to engage the larger, you know, the entire population when we're there. The thing that is really to, goes back to Dawn's question, what would really complete the circle is if we went back and dug deeper into that small cohort, which we can.
Just to follow up on, on that, only 35% of the survey respondents had been experiencing homelessness for less than two years. So it's 65% of respondents had experienced homelessness for over three years. And so I, I do think it would be really important to pull out those who've experienced homelessness for less than two years and to do a deeper dive into that data. We know that the cost of housing has risen exponentially. As I'm sort of looking at this breakdown, I kind of see a post-COVID, during COVID, pre-COVID group. And so I, I think it would be helpful to perhaps consider dividing the data into those three sets to look at that. Because some of the information, you know, around the cost, how much people are paying for rent, information like that. If we're, if we're asking people who've experienced homelessness, you know, who fell into homelessness 15 years ago, how much their rental payment was, that's really going to skew the data. So I do want to just underscore and emphasize the comments that have already been provided about pulling out the, that group, the cohort for under two years.
Yeah, please, Tim.
First of all, thank you, Doug. And thanks, everybody. Not enough, there's anybody from CityNet here. CityNet here? No. Well, thanks, CityNet. Appreciate it. It's good work. I'm glad to see that you, the question was asked, like where they last had a permanent residence. I know we've talked about this before. That was a game changer for Orange County a long time ago. We did a demographic profile of homelessness back in the late 80s and early 90s. We did two of them where we compared that. And that shifted the dialogue because up until that point here in the county, you had a lot of cities, I won't name names, see me afterward, that would claim they had zero. Like homelessness was not a problem for their city. And because we were asking the wrong question, we were asking, where are you homeless now? So I'm standing here, I'm homeless in Tuss, and I take a step to the right, I'm homeless in Santa Ana. Right? And so we asked the question differently. And that opened up a can of worms where now we could prove that, no, this is a countywide, it's a countywide problem that requires a countywide solution. Nobody gets to sit this one out. We all have to contribute. So I'm glad to see that that question was answered. And what's interesting is looking at the answers to that question, it tracks along with the cities that existed at the time, pretty roughly along with what I recall. That was the split back then. But I also want to point out, there were only two cities that had a zero. Right? So still that remains true, that this is something that is, that every city owns a piece of. So that was one point I wanted to make. Another thing that I want to just caution on, I mean, obviously, the language we use when we're talking about this stuff is really important. And I look at the key findings and I see, you know, that the factors, the first one, that the factors and journeys into homelessness are varied. I would caution us in using that language because so I would caution us in using that language because so often those of us who've been around this issue for so long, we get caught in this trap where it's so complex because everybody's individual journey is so complex. So we have to address it on this individual level because the problem is really someone's mentally ill. The problem is really someone's got a chemical dependency issue. The problem is really this and that. When we know and we look at this data that further, you know, validates that if we produce enough housing and supportive housing with services, that we end homelessness. The lack of housing causes homelessness for the most part and housing ends homelessness for the most part. That doesn't necessarily, that doesn't say that we don't acknowledge these other factors that contribute to it and make it more difficult to house people sometimes, right? But I just think, I just want to caution us in using that as sort of a takeaway from the key findings here, that we, we don't perpetuate the myth that it's just so complex that we can't possibly understand it because everybody's individual journey is so different. So that's another point I wanted to make. And then I also think in terms of kind of where we go from here, like whenever these things are done, the danger is always like, oh, well, we did that, put it on the shelf, that's going to be a nice paperweight for somebody and, and that'll be it. We've assembled in this room to hear the findings of this, like people who were involved in all parts of the system, who have power and authority and allocation decision-making and all that kind of stuff. I wonder what and what you've thought about and what we can all think about in terms of a process to create maybe some tiger teams around, you know, jointly between the commission and the COC board and some others, you know, who are here, that we might look at some of, maybe even the low hanging fruit, right? I look at some of the issues on here and while we did, you know, you, you point out like that people didn't reach out for assistance beforehand or people were given only a week's notice, you know, before. And then you look at that issue that, well, most of those people who were only given a week's notice or less were staying with friends and family. Well, how do we address that issue? I don't know, but that seems to be a problem in the system that's not being currently addressed. So maybe some good thinking around that might come up with some creative solutions around it. So it's things like that. How do we get better legal services to people who are facing eviction? How do we create a situation? I, I was struck by the people who didn't seek services. And yeah, it's easy to say, well, they didn't seek them because they didn't know about them or whatever. Well, if they don't know about them, that's a problem that we need to solve, right? How do we socialize that better? If they know about them and they don't trust that they're, they're going to solve them, that's another problem. So we don't really know that. I think that would be interesting to know a little bit more about that so that we could then maybe try to solve it. I also want to give a little pitch at the, you know, the, that for a long time, those of you who've worked with me on the COC board for a long time, know that resource mapping is something I've been on and on about, you know, for years. And I know we're on the verge of doing that finally here, which I'm, I'm really excited about. But I think that's important too, because I agree with you, we're, and we all know the landscape is changing and we're having to now address all these issues in an atmosphere of reduced funding, in an atmosphere where the very structures of the evidence-based practices that we know work are being attacked, right? As not effective anymore, right? So we are going to have to be very targeted and we're going to have to pick our spots in terms of how we're allocating resources more effectively and more efficiently. And so I think that resource mapping part of it is going to be really important to make determinations on how much we allocate to prevention, how much we allocate to, you know, navigation or whatever other aspects of the, of the system, we, we want to do that. And so, and then the last thing I would ask is that, are there plans to do this again so that we can track, you know, these, these particular bits of data over time? Thank you.
So to that last question, what we've seen to be really valuable in all years of Orange County's point in time is to do a robust survey like this. You haven't thought about what 2027 looks like, but yeah, I think that that was the same question that asked back in 2023. I think the only way you measure progress is measuring over time. Yeah, this will be something that brought back to this body in about a year. Yeah, please.
Are you had numbers up there on disabilities in various categories prior to becoming homeless? Was the question asked after they'd been homeless for a year or two? Did we get the numbers on that?
So we asked both prior to becoming homeless and after becoming homeless. What you see here up on the, up on the screen here is on the left are people that were, stated that they were diagnosed prior to homelessness and on the right is those that stated they were diagnosed. Yeah. This was also a question where, you know, what we heard back from CityNet was, we're not 100% sure if, you know, there's some questions we, you know, felt like we got, we got the particular answer or the person understood the exact question we were saying. So the answer they gave us was specific to the question we asked. These were ones where when we look back at it, we just weren't sure if everybody picked up on. That's another reason why we think that A, these are significant stats here, but we think that they're probably lower than the reality.
And do we have that broken down by cities?
We don't have that broken down by cities. I mean, we have every survey we could, you know, if there's a particular interest and asking that question is, do you have, I'm going to ask, is there something you're thinking being the reason you're asking?
Yes, along, down the line, I would like to see how this plays out with cities that Dr. Kelly Bruno Nelson is taking care of with the street medicine.
How those interventions are working. Yeah, Dawn first and then I'll go to Milo.
To hammer home this point, that this does not show causation. I just did a quick Google. 13.9% of the general population has a cognitive disability. 23.1% of the general population has an emotional behavioral disability. So these are lower than general population numbers. So in terms of saying, well, they're homeless because they have these things, it's most people who have these conditions are housed.
That's worth.
I have a question on that. You Googled that. Was the Google ant asking the same question diagnosed?
Impossible to know and imperfect, absolutely, absolutely. But at the same point, when I look at these stats, I, I know those are not dissimilar from my world, people I know. And so it bears, and it bears better, better study certainly Bob, for sure.
Hi, it's Milo with, here on the commission side. This is a couple of comments. First of all, great work. I haven't been that closely involved, but I'll just say, just for those who are listening, I know some advocates were asking about the, this, this is, this study is the second in such a report that by the Office of Air Care Coordination that's alternates with the HUD mandated survey, which is more about kind of comparisons across the nation. So this allows for a deeper dive qualitative and I think to kind of spin off things like the study that came out from, in 2023, right? The Benioff Study. And I, I think, I think just to tie my, I just want to speak about resource scarcity and how we approach the times to come. And for me, when I look at this, one, I see a very serious systemic gap on lower acuity households that is really poorly defined after all these years, despite all of our hard work and, and individual expertise. 44.3%, I think is the number in this whole study that to me stands out of people who are coming from situations that are, where they're not the primary leaseholder, you know, they're not, they don't sign the lease. And I think it's always been the case that there's way too many homeless prevention resources that require the recipient to be a tenant who then has to document that they have a landlord who is initiating an unlawful detainer, three day notices, those types of things. That has never worked super well. Once a landlord does that, they've already spent a thousand dollars, they're kind of on that track. You do want to ask your landlord to give a three day notice, those types of things, these things come up. But I, I appreciate why you would do that when there's not enough money to go around. It's clear, this person's being evicted, this money has solved it. So from a distance, the funding world, the money appreciates the clarity of that program. And I think also in the same way, the, the legal framework that we constantly discussing is about landlords and tenant relations. But in fact, you know, that kind of eviction control kind of conversation that we, we see, rent control, does it, how does that apply to someone who's in a, in a household where maybe it's not in that person's interest to remain there no matter what? And so I, I think, I think this really is data that speaks to, to a cohort in need of very different strategies. And, you know, I think the problem with the scarcity mindset is we think, well, how can we spend our money well? Well, let's gatekeep it, let's instill limits, right? Let's make sure that the case manager, caseworker gets the paperwork that documents carefully that we've done this correctly, that they have the right geographical city associations that we care about because it's our, our money. And I think this really speaks to the power importance of having client or human-centered policies and, and, and back into that and kind of going back to how do we structure these and then look differently at how to assess how the funds are used. And going back to our, the, our chairs, joint chairs, opening comments about the importance of being data-driven and rather being driven by how we want to spend our money, it's how do we solve the problem? And this creates the problem that then we can take forward in what will clearly be a resource scarce environment, what will clearly have an environment with rising homelessness. And we can't go into that saying, we've got to put more rules on our money. We have to do something very different. If we can address that problem there, it'll look very different in 10 years. And just thinking back when I first was involved with a rapid rehousing program, and I think in 2013, when we first started the veterans surge, and that was the SSVF program, if we had gone back then and we weren't requiring three day notices, if we were just requiring that they qualify in some sort of broader way, and then we audited the programs afterwards, you know, just more aggressively audited for, for, for outcomes, how many people, how many veterans would not have been homeless today as a result of approaching it on the front end differently? So this is a chance for us to really put the people we're here for first, and that's how we at a systemic level address homelessness and end it, you know? So I just think, and just I'll close with, I think this is excellent work. It's just honestly, I'm so proud to be here. I know the COC in particular, you work so hard on this, at such great length and the Office of Care Coordination staff, I just, I have to stop talking because I'll just go on for 10 minutes. But I just really, I'm just very impressed with this high quality work. I hope the broader audience listening is aware of, of, of the strong leadership in this county that continues to do such excellent work on behalf of what needs to get done. Thank you.
I'll start, I'll go.
Can you hear me? When you're doing the survey and you were talking about children, can you define children or family? Was their youth also interviewed? Were they given a questionnaire also?
We, we did not come across any individuals under the, under the age of 18, so we did not survey any youth. We define children as 18 and under.
Okay. In that survey was returning citizens of youth and foster youth included? And youth that have made the decision to stay back here while their parents were deported? And now they have nowhere to go because they have, now they're living on the street or surf, couch surfing with their friends?
Yeah, this is, this sort of goes back to, and I appreciate you bringing this up, how this survey surveyed a very specific population, one that I think is incredibly, our results are incredibly important. They do not represent everybody experiencing homelessness. I think you pointed out a handful of populations that the survey does not represent. Equally as important.
How do you measure it's saying that it's not a high population? How do you measure that if you don't have the information or the data? How can, how did, okay, let me rephrase that question. How did you get the data to be able to state that?
Can you be, I'm sorry, can you be specific about which data point?
You said, you said that there wasn't a high represent, there, there wasn't a lot of children or youth that can represent this category. How were you able to state that?
Yeah, maybe I, I misspoke. What I, what I was trying to say was that we did not survey any youth. So the results of this survey does not tell their story. That doesn't mean that they're, you know, a smaller cohort, a larger cohort or anything. I just want to be really specific because most importantly, A, to represent this group, but really importantly, to make sure that this doesn't speak for like some of the populations that you had mentioned here as well, because we understand that their experiences might be different.
Okay, because I'm speaking for that population, I just retired as a street outreach worker of 28 years of doing sex trafficking, gang intervention, youth diversion and reentry and working within the population of youth right here at the juvenile here and in Chinon Institution. And we have a very high population of that and maybe that we can maybe put it on the table that if you were looking for that information, maybe hit up like Project Kinship, you have all these reentry places because they're not being served when it comes to housing. And that just escalates to, again, they have already have mental health disorder, not disorders, mental health injuries from abandonment, insecurities and, and not able to regulate their emotions because they've been in a system that doesn't teach them, teach them that. And while being unhoused causes it even worse. I still do work in the field and I come across unhoused youth every day, couch surfing on someone's couch, that somebody at school, not their parents, because their parents are deported or they, their parents are incarcerated, they don't have a place to stay, they don't have family, it could be a toxic dynamic. And it's a high rate and it's not being, and it's not being talked about.
No, Dr. Mitchell, you're up.
I mean, I think to kind of, you know, go off of a little bit of what Sammy's saying, maybe something to look at as well, just because if you look at on page 20, just kind of who they are, you know, 39% of the respondents said that there was childhood poverty. So as we look into figuring out, what do we do for prevention? We should be looking at our youth, our young adult population to figure out how do we wrap services around them more appropriately, so that they don't become the chronically homeless population of the future. So I think that's worth calling out and kind of thinking about how do we prioritize our younger generation to make sure that we have some preventative measures in place to really support them from here and on out.
I feel like I, I just jumped into a question the last time I spoke and I didn't say how grateful I am for this data. So I, I want to put that out there as somebody who spends a lot of her time and her team spend a lot of time talking about why people become homeless in Orange County, rallying community members to be a part of solutions to end homelessness, this information in this survey is extremely important. So I, I just want to come back to say thank you. I just, I got too excited about the data. So thank you. But pivoting again to the data, on slide 16, which asks the question, was their name on the mortgage, lease or rental agreement? The, the answers have been combined, I'll give you a second. Oh, this one. So the top two, the answers were combined for yes or no. If we could separate that, I think that would be really helpful because I suspect that the, the no for staying with friends or family is what is driving that no up. And I say that with some data behind to just kind of build off what Milo was saying about our need for more flexibility in the homelessness prevention space for people who do not have formal lease agreements. So the 44.3% staying with friends or family are very unlikely to have a formal lease agreement. We, United Way operates 211 and some of the data that we have and that we've been monitoring is we've had 3,000. monitoring is we've had 3,688 calls looking for rental assistance. And we've actually been screening those callers to see if they meet the traditional definition of being at risk of homelessness. And 57% of callers have not met the traditional definition of being at risk of homelessness, meaning they don't have that three day notice, they don't have a formal notification, they've missed their rental payment, many are in informal lease agreements with friends or family members. And so we're seeing a huge percentage immediately not meeting the definition of being at risk of homelessness. And I think this 44.3% is really tracking with what we're hearing anecdotally, with what we're, what we're experiencing through the data. I just wanted to to really call that out and reference again and highlight the need for us to be more flexible with how the funding is being used and made available to people who aren't going to have the documentation that we're often requesting. And then just, I ran some numbers. I took your 12% of people who've fallen into homelessness who said they had reached out for help. I equated that 12% to the 3,688, just to give us kind of an idea. It'd be about 27,000 people in Orange County who are currently at risk of falling into homelessness, who are not reaching out for help. So just wanted to kind of highlight the need for us as a community to find a better ways, yes, on the communication to make sure people who are at risk of falling into homelessness are aware of resources, but also for our resources to be more flexible and easily accessible.
Can we get the 27,000 number from there quick?
Yes. I'll re-run my math again. I did double check it with a member of my team. So your 12%, I equated your 12% to be 3,000, the 3,688 calls that we've had looking for rental assistance. So 12 divided by 3,688 multiplied by 80.
You're assuming that that only represents 12% of the?
Yes. And so the 88% who haven't reached out for help would be 27,000 people. Yeah.
So, all right, people can introduce themselves. Nishka, please, and if you can introduce yourself, viewing audience.
We're breaking, he's, he's in charge, but I know that there were some other comments.
Can you introduce yourself?
Absolutely. My name's Nishtha and I serve on the COC board as the vice chair currently. Thank you so much, Doug, Zulima, and the team for making this possible and coming back in this detail. I think a lot of what I had in mind to point out has been touched on, so I'm going to spend a minute or two on some additional things. I echo where you were at, that homeless prevention is an important strategy and an important pillar for our system. I wonder what our world would look like where it's not a crisis response, but rather an actual default investment that we make into the homeless response system. By that, I mean, there's a substantial number of respondents to the survey that talked about experiencing homelessness within the first or recently in a year. Those are telltale signs for homeless prevention not being effective at the time. And if only we infused it as an intentional pillar and as an actual intervention, we would have better outcomes. Second related piece that I wanted to mention was around predictive data and early warning system. I'm going to pull a little bit thread on where Tim, our board member, was at, the room for some further investment and detailing on how this data is going to inform our work. The data clearly showed that the precursors are financial strain, system involvement, and trauma, and that those appear again and again in the experience of homelessness. Let's maybe spend some time now in how we leverage this data to build a predictive tool that'll flag at-risk households earlier so we can intervene before the safety net fails. And there are some good examples nationally and in our neighboring counties on how predictive analysis can be built into the homeless response system. Last but not the least, I would be remiss if I didn't spend time on that we heard qualitatively, it sounds like in the responses on the survey, that just providing housing is not the answer. So beyond housing supply, looking at what supportive services and investing in care for building those supportive relationships, for building and rebuilding financial stability and not just a physical unit. So the importance of thinking about that next step to regain stability.
Since everyone else thanked you so much, I'll leave that out. But the
Jason, you may introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Phillips on the COC board. Looking at the two highest reasons, financial and relationship, and then on 36, I'm just looking for some clarity. Of those 17 and a half percent that said, yes, they could have remained, they're saying, yes, we could have remained housed if we had financial assistance. So are these households that maybe they're a part of financially at risk as well? And therefore, it's not, they don't have a safety net because their safety net is also experiencing financial poverty. But I don't, I don't know if the data shows that, but it might just reveal that those same households that are unable to accept them are also at risk and may soon become homeless as well.
That at the moment doesn't look into that. It's hard not to think.
Thank you, Doug. Sandra Lozo, sitting on the COC. My comment is more towards I've seen a shift in the state. Out of the 44 continuum of cares, 30 are now doing annual pit counts. And so I know you mentioned you're nervous about the 2026 pit, but some cities and COCs already have their numbers for this year. So we keep focusing on the unsheltered because that's who everybody sees, that's who everybody wants to help. And I know and understand that we count all the sheltered every year. And it would be nice to maybe also pivot as we're looking at this data and finding out why, the why, that we continue to monitor and keep a pulse on the the numbers and the counts of the unsheltered on the street. I think that would be helpful. From our jurisdiction, we're looking at and operating off a 2024 pit count while monitoring our HMIS system, while we're housing people. We're leasing up with our colleague right here to my right in the next month or two and next year with our Tampico motel for our first permanent supportive housing for our transitional age youth. But we're going off numbers from 2024. So I think if the state is all shifting to annual pit counts for unsheltered as well, I think we need to also look at that. Thank you.
Hi there, Nicole Gideon from the COC. I just want to comment real quick on the original data point that brought us here today, the 48.3% that we're saying is now an anomaly. And and that, of course, is good news. And it had originally jumped out to me as well, since we prioritize chronically homeless, which in our system means at least one year, but more than likely three to four to five years homeless. So if we're pouring in at that level, it would have been concerning that we're going to be consistently increasing, which isn't going to help our score for, you know, funding. But looking over on page 12, if we expand from looking at the one year at 15% to looking up, and I think Bex referenced this, to two years, that's 35%, which isn't 48%, but is pretty significant. So I would maybe encourage a conversation around readdressing our current prioritization to look at not only helping the people that have been out there the longest, but to see if maybe we can help people sooner, because as the length of time on the streets and homelessness continues, the more services, the harder it is to sustain that housing. So maybe we can think about a two-pronged approach to the length of time people spend out there before we're offering homelessness.
Thank you, Doug. Can you hear me?
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. George Cersey with the COC board. Well, first of all, I want to echo all the compliments about doing this research because what I'm about to say is I feel like this is a tremendous first step towards a picture of Orange County's strategy regarding addressing this challenge, what I would consider a crisis, using a data-centered approach. That being said, I feel as though, Doug, if you want to comment on this, I'd appreciate that. This is a lot of great data that is descriptive of the factors, explaining different dimensions of the population that is experiencing being unhoused. Would you agree with that?
Say that one more time.
Is, this is, this is data that is doing a great job at describing the various dimensions of the characteristics of the people that were involved in the study. These are the, these are their characteristics.
Yeah, I think that's a really good way to sum it up, the different questions we had.
So so I would say to my colleagues around the table here that what we have built here is a great platform to go forward from. But I would say it creates, in my mind, several research questions that would need to be explored in order to properly design interventions that we feel great about investing in, and we can also demonstrate what the results of that were. And I feel like without that thoughtful approach, much like Tim's constant harping on not having a resource map to to actually identify where all the resources that are available to invest in doing that strategically, this provides a doorway into a future where we could say, and I just wrote a couple of research questions off the top of my head, Doug, that based on what you presented. I mean, one research question is, as we began to create interventions around prevention strategies, one question is, do people who seek help, you know, you identified in one of the slides that some people do seek help and some people don't seek help, and their characteristics of the population. But my question would be, do people who seek help experience less homelessness than those who don't? We, this did not ask that question. But in terms of investing in strategies, I feel like that would be a really valuable piece of information to know further, like the next wave, next level up. Another research question that occurred to me was on a similar theme, but different. Do people who receive assistance exit homelessness or avoid homelessness and at what rates over time? In other words, we're doing an intervention and we, our theory is that that intervention helps people exit homelessness, and the theory is that they they're able to sustain that housing and remain housed. But the question is, do we know that? Or are there other underlying factors, which goes back to Don's comment about correlation is not causation, right? Maybe there were underlying factors that created their homelessness that didn't have anything to do with the intervention we're providing. We don't know that, but I feel like what you've done is created a great platform that allows us to ask other questions, to help us make decisions about where we make investments, and to get feedback as the interventions roll out that help us retool as the interventions roll forward. So that's all I have, but thank you, Doug, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We're going to go to 2:50, so I'll take a few more.
Hello, I'm Marisol from the COC board. Thank you so much for the survey. I appreciate everyone's involvement. So in regards to the data regarding to disability, I, in my, in my opinion, I do believe the number should be higher, just because usually people with disability, they are afraid to disclose their disability because, again, they're unhoused, they feel unsafe, and if they show that they're vulnerable, it's it's hard for them. Now, I do see the reporting of the increase after being unhoused. I feel that a lot of people get diagnosed because they know they could get into a housing program because of that. For me, I always encourage to get people diagnosed as soon as possible because they could get help faster. But I also want to point out that, like, people with disability, their health get worse because they're unhoused, they don't have the, like, the correct support. So that's why I'm so grateful for Calptom. But anyhow, and also, you made a point about the wording that you felt that the number might be lower because of the wording. Again, I feel like the number should be higher. And then if there was concern, the wording, we could work on that next time when we do this. And also, in regards to the wording, on slide 25, about relationship factors, I found it interesting that is 37% argument or fallout, but on the bottom, it's also a higher number is 36% for none of the above. So for me, this is what I'm thinking. I'm thinking the change of household composition. I don't think people understood what that meant, because in my head is like, or what my experience has been is that people become unhoused more often because their partner passes away. So that's why I feel like none of the above should have maybe gone to the change of composition, in my opinion. But we need to figure out what's, what is not listed because that's a big percentage.
Thank you for pointing that out. And Zulima, just correct me if I'm wrong here, none of the above are actually folks.
Factors were not an issue, right?
Because I believe the end is
It's like 8:40 on this. Does it say 8:40?
It says 8:40. So, yeah.
The way we presented that, thank you for pointing that out slightly.
Those, none of the above just
Said no relationship factor wasn't an issue.
Not that relationship was an issue, but the options you provide don't appropriately categorize my relationship.
Okay, well, maybe we could update the wording.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
So do you, do you need one more thank you? Should I start off by thanking you again?
We've still got a lot of work to do. I mean, getting the data is important, and we appreciate it, but there's a lot of people that still need help, so it's not like this helped anybody.
Well.
I'll put it that way. I appreciate it, but we got a lot of work to do.
So Kelly Bruno Nelson, Calptom Health, sit on both the COC and the commission. So, you know, I often say that homelessness is a complex problem and it requires a complex solution, but I also, I want to be caution, be cautionary with that because I do also have concern with that first key finding, that there are varied issues, because I do not want us to think, well, it's so complex that we throw our hands up in the air and say, we can't solve this. The number one reason that folks fall into homelessness, and you verify this again, is because they can't afford to live. End of story. We have been very fortunate at Calptom Health to be able to give a lot of grant dollars to help folks, to help organizations build housing. And I'm here to tell you that money isn't everything, because almost every single one of those grantees has had difficulty operationalizing and finishing the project that we helped to fund, because barrier after barrier after barrier happens that makes it more difficult for them to complete the project that they set out to complete. These are oftentimes nonprofit organizations. These are organizations that are doing the right thing, and they come against barriers often, and they can't complete or have a difficult time completing the housing that they set out to complete. Money isn't everything. We have 34 cities in this county and we're very fortunate to have them, but they all have different rules. They all have different things that have to be done, and it makes it more difficult to build. We have got to make it easier to build in this county. We have to make it easier to build the housing, because that is the number one thing that is going to help make these numbers go down. People need to afford to live. It's not always money. I'm not saying we don't want money, but I'm saying it's not always money.
Appreciate that. I guess there's two things that I, you know, want to add to that. I think as you mentioned the wording to the first, Tim mentioned it, I sort of wrote down and thinking out loud, so don't literally use this against me, but I, I think what might be a better way to have been, a better way to state it is, is that people's, what we're seeing here is that people's journey into homelessness is unique, but they, there is trend, and arguably, what makes them unique is that mixture, their own mixture of these characteristic buckets that we have, the sort of cocktail of that.
Whether, would we show up here, whether it's based on finances, relationships, health, things to that nature.
So although it's, people's journey is unique, that doesn't mean that, you know, there aren't trends, and to your point, to both of your points, that there aren't things that we could set up on a system level that can really help a lot of people. And then your last point to, you know, probably speaks to potential steps to talk about at, I think, the commission as well, of not only the financial barriers of building housing, but many of the barriers that make housing more expensive and more difficult. Think of the commission as, you know, executive level leadership. That I'll pass it back. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. You sent this out, you know, Orange County Supervisor. You will get no more thank yous from me, because you've gotten plenty. But I will thank everybody who spoke, everybody who was here, everybody who's done the work. And let me just wrap this up, because I want to be really respectful with everybody's time, and I want to make it out of here before 3:00 P.M. So thank you for your participation. I just want to, you know, kind of wrap it up by saying, there are some, you know, as I'm sitting here, I kind of reflect back, because my time in government, and started as a council member in Santa Ana back in 2007, and then I became mayor in 2020, and now here I am at the county. I remember when there were, there were no shelters, and no city wanted to, you know, host and cite any shelters. And so it's just funny how far we've come, we haven't solved the problem, but where we were back when everybody started looking at each other, when we had this homeless number in the encampment on the riverbed, and the encampment in the civic center, and we started saying, well, what are we going to do about this? Right? And then I remember a former supervisor referring to the homeless population as criminals, as drug addicts, as, you know, mentally ill, and we know that, and we knew that wasn't the case then, and we know that's not the case now. But nonetheless, that's how far we've come. Because now, you know, I told Doug, tell me how many shelter beds we have in the county. And when he told me the number, I was pretty, you know, thrown back, because he said it was over a thousand, right? When you aggregate everything together, county facilities, city facilities, private and faith-based, it's an incredible number from where we were. Doesn't mean we've got the problem solved, but we are certainly on the right path with respect to that, and that was really the first question. Then we started talking about housing, and then housing first, the model, right? Let's get people housed, let's make sure we have the inventory, maybe not match the demand, but let's get busy on that, because for a long time, there was almost a moratorium. When I arrived in Santa Ana, they weren't building any housing. They didn't even, they weren't even talking about affordability. And so that's all changed with almost all our cities, because we realize how much of a cost of living problem we have for people here in this county who were raised here and may not be able to live here and come back. And we're talking about youth, we're talking about people who were raised in this county may not be able to come back and afford to live here. So that is something we can't abandon, and I don't think that's what any of us have said or what the findings shows. It just means that that is a long-term investment, and I think to, you know, to Kelly's point, I think you never take your foot off the pedal on that one. You just have to, we just have to keep on building. But it's lengthy, it's expensive, and it's challenging. So we have to have some other short-term or interim steps as well, just to make sure that as we're building out a larger inventory of housing, the front door isn't getting bigger. In other words, we're not having more people enter. So that's where I think, you know, this whole prevention piece comes from, and what I was hoping to find, and you all enlightened me on many things, and it was just fascinating to listen to you. But fascinating to see the results of these, of the study, is that it does match what they're finding nationally and what they're finding statewide, is that, you know, this financial gap, or this disparity between what people earn and what they, what they are required or what they have to pay for housing, is a real problem. And that bleeds into these other factors, whether they're relationships, whether they're illness, all these other factors that play a role in a person being unhoused. So we know that prevention isn't a theory, it is something that can work. And what I kind of want to bring us back to is, you know, kind of bring you into my world, this is, this all has to be couched in the political world as well. Politics play a critical role in this, because we're talking about accountability. Those that are elected have to be able to say to their constituents, yes, our plan is working. But when the point in time count is increasing, when the numbers seem to be going in the wrong direction, that's a problem. So you will have a knee-jerk reaction when it comes to, you know, to those who are going to be making decisions. And I can tell you for a fact, there is frustration at the board, because we want to make sure that those precious dollars that we have that are decreasing, and resource scarcity is real, that they're being used wisely. So there is a very sharp look, not to dismantle anything, but to compliment what we've been doing, because some things work, and they're working well. But some others may not have been leaned into as much as they should, and that's where I think prevention can make a difference, because one of the things, you know, I think Doug was explaining, and I know he's told this to me before, as you're addressing people who are in shelters, and you're trying to transition them into housing, it's very difficult, because there's just not housing available enough, because there are people now who are way beyond their time in shelters. They're there years, and it was supposed to be months. It was supposed to be a very, you know, immediate, short-term placement. They're there now because we don't have sufficient housing there for much longer. Well, if we can prevent people from becoming unhoused in the first place, that addresses a lot of problems, because it's a smart return on your investment when it comes to those who are going to be decision-making as well. It costs one-tenth the amount to be able to prevent somebody from being housed, than finding them on the back end and trying to find housing for them, because once they're unhoused, then they're absorbing all these other impacts. They're becoming, you know, you know, dependent on substance abuse, they're becoming more chronically ill, they're becoming more trauma-impacted because of the panic of being unhoused and not being able to care for themselves and house themselves. So it, the problem just becomes much more enormous. If we can find them on the front end, and that's what's difficult for me, where do, you know, how do you find those that are on the precipice, on the brink of being unhoused? Are they going through an unlawful detainer? Are they in, are they in an eviction process? Are they in a family setting where they're going to be told to leave their, leave their household? That's hard to identify, but we need to find them, and we know they're, they're out there. So that is something that I know the chairman of the board has convened an ad hoc that I'm a member of, and it's to address this specific problem when it comes to prevention as a, as a pillar that we need to now really target and focus in on when it comes to homelessness. So that is something that is a, going to be a policy direction that's going to be leaned into by the board going forward. So I certainly appreciate the comments here, I appreciate the findings and all the support that show that we are, you know, going in the right direction. I do also want to say, about the twelve percent of people who sought help, that is a very, very low number. I'm alarmed by it as well, because, you know, I think either we're not messaging well enough, and it's also, you know, there's a nexus with the grand jury report that showed the same thing. So we need to do a much better job on that. I was looking at our website, and here's kind of what our website looks like with a little bit more. It's a one-pager. I think we can do better than this. I think there's ways that, you know, we can come up with some more thorough information, and it's not really for people who are unhoused, but it's for people who are providing those services on where the resources are, because there are plenty of resources here, so we can do much better on that, on improving the website. But I think to somebody's point, when it comes to outreach, people who are unhoused aren't on the website. You know, you need to meet them and find them and provide that information in unconventional, labor-intensive ways. That means maybe going out through, you know, members who are of trust, whether it's faith-based, whether it's our nonprofits, others that can, you know, explain what those resources are. So that campaign, that effort, that outreach needs to continue, and we need to improve on that. One last thing I'll leave you with, because we're at 3:01, the Samweli Foundation also, there was an article written up on what they're going to do. Their efforts almost exclusively were on prevention, because what they saw is that was the most effective way to close this gap. And it mirrors a study that was done by UC San Francisco just last year that showed, you know, the disparity isn't massive, it is real, but we can address it, and if we can address it soon, people will not have to suffer, you know, the consequence of being unhoused. So that is, you know, what I gleaned from this. I want to thank you all for your comments, and I know I will be asking county staff to come back with a plan that includes expanding prevention services for the county. That's something that is going to be a specific ask of mine. And, you know, and obviously on the outreach and making sure we reach people more effectively. But I just wanted to thank you all for your participation. Prior to adjourning, I wanted to see if the vice chair had any comments.
In respect of time, I'll quickly add, thank you for your shared commitment. No, thank you to you, Doug. And COC Board will be taking into consideration and incorporating these findings into the recently undertaken strategic plan, along with the HAP recommendations. HAP standing for Homeless Housing and Assistance and Prevention Grant Program. So thank you again for the opportunity for being here.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned. The next meeting of the COC Board will be held on Wednesday, September 24th at 2:00 P.M., and the next commission meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 12th at 1:00 P.M. Thank you, everybody, have a great day.
Bring your interns over here, would you please?